Hey Bob. Okay, you did a great job, but we'll make somebody else do it next time. Okay, did you try to get on yet? Okay. Hi Bill, you can unmute. I was talking to Bill. Okay, I'll hang up.
Okay.
Hey Bill, hey Michael, nice to meet you. Michael is filling in for Ed.
Hello, good evening gentlemen.
How are you doing?
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine.
Great.
Can you hear me Doug?
I can hear you too Bill.
Okay, excellent.
I don't know why we don't have anybody else on here yet. Oh, here we go. Deborah Knott is here. Bill Knott is here. Hi Deborah and Bill, this is Doug.
Hi, how are you?
Just talked to Bob Bieringo, I'm gonna call him back. Hello? Okay, I'm gonna send it to you right now. Okay guys, I'm just sending Bob the invitation again. Got Peter Charo. Excellent, hello everyone. Hey Peter. Hi David.
Hi Doug, how are you?
Hi Peter.
Excuse me?
I said hi Peter, we can hear you. Bob is...
Say something about David.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, we're hearing you loud and clear David. I don't see anybody else in the waiting room. We are being recorded, just so everybody knows.
I'll try to control myself.
I gotta send this invitation again to Joe.
I see Mr. Dolan there, next to me, are you filling in for Ed?
Excuse me?
Are you filling in for Ed?
Indeed, how are you David?
Good to see you, doing well.
You.
Doug, this is Amy Crane, I have a question, I was not able to attend part one, will there be any kind of brief summary of what happened in part one, or is there something I can...
Yes, you can do it, we're gonna publish the notes from that and we also have the entire, I can send you a link to the whole recording, depending on how much you want to torture yourself. Okay, here we go, we're getting, we got Bob here. And we still don't have Joe, but I think we can I think we can start. Bob Bieringo has volunteered to take the notes and if we could start and have just the select, have everybody but the select board maybe mute themselves till we get called on, that would help. And who is 3398349? Just for the record.
Whoever it is just unmuted themselves, so maybe they will now reveal who they are.
Hey Doug, it's Joe.
Hey excellent, that's who I thought it might be. I'm gonna rename you here. Okay. And Bob, can you see everybody's names, or should I write the names down for you?
Bob is muted.
You're muted Bob.
Can you hear me now?
Yes we can.
Okay, I'm writing the names down.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03. And this is the continuation of the public hearing for this AT&amp;T, the proposed AT&amp;T cell tower. If you missed the first meeting, I have a link that I can send you and I will put on the website, I think it's up on the website, the planning board website already, but there's a link to a recording of that session and this session is being recorded. And we will also publish the notes, I think we have to we have to vote on the notes at our next regular planning board meeting. And I'll just say in advance that AT&amp;T has asked for a continuation to be able to answer our questions. And so that, I think, I think we will be doing that. And I guess is that Michael, are you, are you, you're taking Ed's place for that discussion?
Yeah. So good evening everyone. Ed unfortunately had another commitment that he couldn't juggle, so he asked me to attend this meeting. Ed had sent a letter back on let's see, May 19th, requesting a continuance for the reasons that we, AT&amp;T and the team just haven't had enough time to pull together, the information was recommended and requested in Mr. Maxon's report. Some of the Conservation Commission representatives' comments, as well as some of the comments from the public and we just need a little bit more time to be able to pull that all together, so would respectfully ask for that continuance till the June meeting.
Okay, I don't think we have, we don't have a date set yet for that. So the planning board would have to set that date. One thing that we would ask is if we're gonna add a number of days to the, to continue the meeting, we would like to add the same number of days to the shot clock for our decision making. And of course, and we'd have to depend...
Absolutely.
We'd have to get that in writing, so I would say at the end of this meeting, we can decide on when, when we'll continue the next part of our, of our public hearing. We, in the last meeting, we had mostly a presentation by AT&amp;T and a bunch of people did not get to speak, so I would like to open up the meeting now, unless you have something new you want to add, Michael, or David, or who else do we have from AT&amp;T, Simon, no, Simon's not AT&amp;T. If you guys have something new you need to add, some questions you want to answer, I'll start with David.
Hi, thanks, David Maxon with Isotrop, working for the board on this application. I had a couple of action items from the last meeting and I'm prepared to either respond to them now, or I can submit them in writing for the applicant to review and prepare to respond to at the next meeting. I leave that up to your discretion.
Well, I think there's a lot of questions, we have a lot of butters here, so I think it'd be good if you did, if you want to address the issues that you know about and then forward them on to AT&amp;T, that would be great.
Okay, will do. Yeah, there was some concern that the predictions of the coverage from the different antenna heights at the proposed site that were provided by C squared systems for AT&amp;T. Some people felt that they, it should be reevaluated just independently by Isotrop, just to compare. And so I'd like to, if I can grab the screen.
Yep, let me...
Sabled screen, share.
I know, I gotta, hang on. Share screen. Hello Kate. God, I can never figure out where to do this, Homer Sumner is joining.
While you're doing that, could I get the last name for Simon and Maria please?
Sure, I'm sorry, don't have the right name, Simon, last name is Rigenti, B as in boy, R-I-G-H-E-N-T-I, and I am with Centerline Communications, which is the which is the company that is hired by AT&amp;T as a consultant to work on this project.
Thank you.
Okay, I seem to have the screen. And where should I say, I think I'll start actually with AT&amp;T's coverage map, so this is where the AT&amp;T, everyone can see this okay? AT&amp;T did the analysis at different heights and overlaid each color on top of the other, so ignoring the green, which is the top layer, which is their prediction of existing coverage. The next layer down is the proposed coverage at 85 feet and you can see how it going to the northeast, it pretty much truncates and there's only a few spots on the tops of hills where their prediction of coverage from 85 feet at the proposed site would reach. Then as you go to the next layer underneath the 85, you can see that the yellow at 136 feet gets the lion's share of the increase in coverage to areas of Heath and a little bit beyond into Colrain. And then the blue at 156 feet, you can see little spots where that additional height is productive. And again, at 176 feet, the red shows a little bit more coverage from that height. And then AT&amp;T provided some computer estimations of land area and population and that sort of thing, based on each one of these coverage levels from the different antenna heights. And you have on their report, they tabulated it up here. And the only thing that I cautioned at the last meeting is that when it comes to county population, that's based on census blocks. So anytime you lose land area, the computer will say you lose population, that's not necessarily the case. So area covered is, and roadway mileages are probably the two best indicators of the change in coverage, not necessarily the change in the number of people or the residences or buildings that can be affected. So as with any data, you have to take it with a little bit of a grain of salt, depending on which row you're looking at. So that's their prediction, and then we ran the same thing using the same heights and the same colors. And we've got a bit more coverage at 85 feet than they did, as I mentioned, their, their 85 foot coverage tends to truncate along a diagonal where my cursor is now, and there were only some blotches of 85 foot height coverage on the tops of some of these, these other hills. We're showing a bit more penetration out to these distances from the 85 foot height. And that doesn't mean their computer model is wrong and ours is right, or vice versa. Computer models operate statistically, so you have to understand what techniques the computer model is using to estimate coverage, and I suspect our technique is a little bit more forgiving of vegetation at the lowest frequency of the 700 megahertz frequency. And I'll show why here. We took a line and we snapped it from the proposed location across to this point over here, which is in a gray area that we show as being reachable from an 85 foot high antenna and C squared system says this is yellow, that you need to be up above 85, at 136 or some other height in order to reach this location. And if we look at the path that our computer model is showing, it creates this cigar shaped path, which is the, what's called the Fresnel zone, it's not, the radio waves don't act like a laser. They kind of occupy this cigar shaped zone on the way across to the target. Target being up here on this road at the end of this straight line. And what we're seeing here is that there is some estimated blockage from vegetation near the site and along the way towards the target at the other end. Our computer model says that's not enough blockage to make the 85 foot height a bad choice. And I'm estimating that C squared system's model is more or less forgiving of this vegetative blockage, so the truth is somewhere in between. And we, we don't have any data to resolve that discrepancy between our two models. But what it does show me nevertheless is that in certain locations, I should not have left it, there we go, back to my model, in certain locations we have solid yellow as well. And it's simply from 85 feet, you can't reach these yellow areas or blue areas or red areas. So from a practical perspective, being higher up to 136 feet gets you the, the most coverage in Heath from this proposed facility. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the things that a board kind of has to balance is not just shortening a tower for shortening a tower's sake, but how much benefit do you get by knocking 20 or 40 feet off of a proposed tower? As opposed to how much debt deficit in beneficial coverage does that cause? And as I remarked at the last meeting, this is your first cell tower and you're, you know, you're certainly right to be cautious and careful and to make sure that you've dotted i's and crossed t's. The thing I have to say is that I rarely see a tower with this little visual impact. There are places where it can be seen, but compared to first proposals of cell towers in a lot of towns in western Massachusetts that I've seen over the years, this one is not perfect, but it is, it is a relatively good choice as far as what towers can do to cause visual impacts on communities. And then the other thing I haven't opened up yet, let me just see if I have that here. I ran a second study, I went over to, what is this Branch Hill Road over here? And I had identified in my report a locus on some high ground on the opposite side of Route 8A from the proposed facility, which is over on this side here. And I ran some coverage from it using that same model, using different heights. And coverage, you have to kind of do some back and forth to make these comparisons, but coverage is, as you might expect, pretty similar between the two until you get to the 176 foot height, at which point a tower over on this other hill suddenly lights up a whole bunch of territory in red, which is kind of unusual, but it's just because it has a better angle of attack on some of these kind of valleys than the proposed site does. Now, I'm not suggesting that as, as an alternative, other than to say this is another area where you, you or the applicant could consider putting a facility, but we have to go back and look at what our concerns were about the proposed facility and what its visual impacts might be, which was in my first report here. That the major place with a proposed facility is likely to be visible is, is on the parcel that we talked about off of Knott Road. The alternate location, I kind of randomly chose a spot over here, I haven't actually identified where I put it. But the difference is it would be closer to property lines a bit perhaps than the proposed facility. It could still be in the woods, but there's other open area that could be visually affected by the an alternative at this location. And it's not necessarily a better location from a visual impact perspective. So if, if there had to be an alternative for some reason, other than my suggestion of doing something much farther north on the proposed property, this other area that I located does provide a substantial amount of coverage and is comparable to, and in some cases better than the proposed location. But really, it comes down to visual impact, is the visual impact of the proposed facility so egregious that we need to take the applicant down the road of looking at other alternatives and vetting them for both visual impact and for coverage? And that's, I think, pretty much what, what I had been asked to speak to last time.
All right. Checking that no one else is trying to get in. Go ahead, go ahead Jane, then I want to hear from the planning board and see what they have to say about that, but you go ahead Jane.
Okay, now, this is just a brief comment. I wonder if you're aware of the long-term history of that area, that alternate area that several years ago, more than 10 years ago, tower was proposed in that exact area with a great deal of arguing over it and it was turned down by the town. That's all I have to say about that right now.
Okay.
Good to know, thank you.
So I guess I have a question for David. We have these computer models for what might happen, but we don't have hard data yet, this is also, I guess, a question for AT&amp;T, but we, is that, can we do a test where we see the actual coverage now, a driving test? Where we see what the real data is and record that?
This is David, let me just kind of weigh in on that, the first thing is that you're in, you're so far from existing wireless facilities that there's not much benefit to doing that. You know, in situations where you have a clearly defined coverage gap and you want to know if it's two miles wide or one and three quarter miles wide, you might go to the trouble of doing a drive test and collecting that data and sharing it. In this case, I don't see that it's, it's a critical piece of understanding the facts. But nevertheless, the applicant may have that data and the board certainly can ask for it if, if it thinks that'll help illuminate the record.
All right, Bill, Joe, Bob. Any comments so far, Peter? Go ahead Bill. You're muted. You're muted.
David, I wanted to ask that slide you were showing of your potential alternative site where the Blue Oval was. Where, where is the school property, the former Heath School property relate, in relationship to that? I couldn't really tell from the map where I was or where you were.
You're muted David.
Let me queue that up and I'll need some help identifying the, the property that you're talking about. Here. Share. Okay, I have, this is Google Earth, so I can zoom and pan and do whatever you want. So this is the general location here above the bend in Branch Hill Road, where is this school property that you were mentioning?
That's what I'm wondering.
It's due north.
Oh here.
Due north.
Yeah, you have to go up.
We have to continue up 8A.
Right there.
Yeah.
But where, so the site you were talking about David is below that, is south of that.
Town of Heath. All right, so that's at 1400 feet of elevation and up in this general area where these parcels come together, we have elevations that are more in the 1600 foot range. Which is really like 100 feet higher than the, the other side. And that could be to its advantage or its disadvantage in terms... And that could be to its advantage or its disadvantage in terms of visibility. And it sounds like there was an attempt to put a tower over here at some time well in the past that was not welcomed.
Go ahead, Bill.
Well, you or Bob might know the answer to this. I think Bob does. The the previous them to put up a tower, I understood that they're simply it wasn't rejected by the town, but it was it didn't attract any locators to or the tower colo-takers. That's the right term. And that the proposal was withdrawn by the applicant or the the group that was proposing. I I wasn't involved in it at all, and I just don't know the history.
Want me to comment on that?
Yes. Please. All right, Bob.
That was a tower company. The tower was approved conditional on the tower company finding someone who would like to put services on the tower. They had a three-year permit, got a three-year extension. Over the six years, they could not find a client. So the permit lapsed. The location was closer to the transfer station. Not up here, not where where the we've been looking.
And can anyone direct me to the transfer station?
Yes, you can. Hang on, I gotta make the map a little bigger so I can see it. You can go to eight, back to 8A, go south to Long Hill Road. And oh, no, no, I'm sorry, Branch Hill Road. That's up, that's right where the 8A letter is, Branch Hill Road. Around and go down halfway down.
Right about there.
Yep, there you go. That's it.
Well, the green there would be the fairgrounds, no?
The the green in the lower right is the fairgrounds, but the the green there is the is the sawmill. So yeah, I think.
So just on the other side of the street.
It's the little square in the top of that square, up up a little bit.
Yeah, there.
That's it.
Right there.
So was it proposed at this parcel? Or near it?
Somewhere in that area. It was many years ago, twenty years ago.
Yeah, sixteen fifty. Right. Well, that's relatively close to this oval that I dropped in this area here. So I mean, if that's, if there is a location that the town found it was was approvable twenty years ago, it might be worth revisiting.
Okay, Bob, the ring go, go ahead.
It's a much lower tower to start out with. I don't think we should go down that road. My, I do have a question. As you know, our bylaw permits up to one hundred and ten feet, but we have no data on what a hundred and ten-foot tower would cover. I think we've requested it, is my recollection from Simon or somebody. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, I mean, this is, that is part of the material that we're working with now in addition to the conservation requests and some of the other items that we'll be presenting at the continuation of this of this hearing. But we do have that that information. And that will be presented or put up on the link as soon as soon as we can.
May I have one more question?
Yes.
To Simon. Is it also true that, let's take the one hundred and eighty-foot tower, that with the extensions, it could be one hundred and ninety-nine feet?
There's a couple of aspects to that. One is that when you talk about one hundred ninety-nine feet, typically you're you're thinking about, or not so you're thinking about, but one of the issues that comes up is FAA regulations where you start talking about a tower having to be lit at two hundred feet or higher. Sometimes it has to be lit if it's a if it's a shorter tower. And so that's, you know, that's where the cutoff usually is at two hundred feet. And then the second issue is whether, once you have a tower up there, whether under the under the recent, relatively recent changes to the law, you can get an extension through a, what's called a sixty-four oh nine process, but I'm not practicing attorney anymore, so I'm not going to go any further than that. We do have our attorney on board here. We could probably get you a little more information on that if you have any more specific questions.
Go ahead, finish up, Bob.
But yeah, but the point is, whether it's one hundred and eighty feet or one hundred and thirty-five feet, et cetera, that you would have an extension above that footage of some amount. Is that correct?
This is David. I'd like to just weigh in on that. Yeah, Simon mentioned section sixty-four oh nine of the twenty-twelve Middle Class Tax Relief and Jobs Creation Act. There's a mouthful. The wireless industry calls it the Spectrum Act. And what the FCC has done to interpret that is to say that it's presumed that adding twenty feet in height, or for that matter breadth, to a tower is not a substantial modification. And therefore, it can be done pretty much by right through a process where the town could still review it, but may not deny and shall approve. And the lawyers have all of their interpretations of that stuff that I hear all the time. What I've seen boards do is incorporate camouflage that would be defeated by increasing the height, because that's one of the protections. Or write the decision in such a way that it attempts to protect the height that's been picked by demonstrating and making a finding that the the height was selected because anything higher is not properly screened or camouflaged. Now, as to whether that kind of a a condition or a finding is something that would hold up in court remains probably to be seen. I'm not an attorney either. So there are ways to protect yourself from that. One of the ones that I've proposed that no one has ever bitten on is, well, if they want a one hundred and thirty-six-foot tower and you're willing to give them a one hundred and thirty-six-foot tower, give them a one hundred and sixteen-foot tower and allow them to invoke their twenty feet at the time of construction. But, you know, all of these options are 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 attempts to sort of game the system in order to protect the town from what might be a height increase that the the decision makers would prefer not to see.
And I, this is Michael. I would just add that this stall presumes that there would be another carrier in the future that could demonstrate a need to go on this tower at that height in the sense that if the one hundred and eighty-foot tower already could house this carrier, it may well be that they want to go on the existing structure, not incur the costs to extend the pole. And everything would hopefully be fine with the proposed structure at one hundred and eighty feet. So yes, there's a chance, but in practice, it could never come, there's a chance it may never come to life.
Okay, Bill?
Am I muted, unmuted? Okay. On the question of height, I know we've been putting out there one hundred and ten feet as allowed by the zoning, but I I haven't, I should have spent more time looking for this, but in section six point ten point three required requirements for fixed wireless transceiver antenna array under B B two B, I guess it is. It says the applicant shall demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that the location of the FWTTAS, which is the fixed wireless transceiver antenna array, is necessary and that the size and height of the tower structure is the minimum necessary for the purpose. The maximum height, the maximum height shall be one hundred feet. Oh, is there someplace else in the bylaw that that gives one hundred and ten feet as a maximum? I maybe I'm looking at the wrong section, but if the maximum height will be one hundred feet, then we're talking about almost doubling of the height over what the bylaw allows as a maximum. Am I wrong on this?
This is David. I said, great point. I was relying on six point three point three point four dimensional requirements. A guide tower, lattice tower, monopole, and any other ground-mounted facility shall not be higher than one hundred and ten feet above ground level. But they may approve, the board may approve a greater height, yada, 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 yada. So I I had, the other one had completely missed me. Good, good catch.
So since we again have a conflict in our zoning, it sounds like two different maximum heights. And in this case, it says the tower structure is the minimum necessary, and then the maximum height should be a hundred feet. I, anyway, I I just saw that, and I just wanted to bring it to our attention.
I'm trying to get to the pull the bylaws up here.
I don't think we should hold up everybody while we argue about the hundred to one hundred and ten, quite honestly.
Okay. Then, well, for, let's open it up to a butters. Other people here, did you want to weigh in? And I'll I'll remind everybody that we are not allowed to use health or financial reasons to turn this down. So we really have to focus on the the reasons that we are for it or against it, other than that. So Bill first and then Kevin.
Thank you. I'm Bill Knott. My wife Deborah is also on this call. We own property at eleven Knott Road. And for those who may be interested, the road is named for my grandfather, also William Knott, who moved there in nineteen seventeen. We, our family has owned property on Knott Road for more than a century now. I wanted to ask a question, two questions that can be answered while others speak to it. One is that I'm curious if the environmental study that has been done has referenced the wetlands area that intersects Row Road directly off the Metallica property. The Metallica property is only two hundred feet wide where it intersects Row Road, and there is a stream, a flowing stream there. I saw it yesterday morning, walked up the stream bed. The property is not marked for no trespassing, and walked up and found the tower site, saw the the tags and the surveyor marks. The proposed site, at least as marked by those who put it in on September twenty-four of nineteen eight of twenty twenty, the proposed site goes right up the stream bed from the road and hugs the stream bed quite a distance up toward the proposed tower site. I'm curious if someone has looked at this in light of the Wetlands Act of nineteen sixty-eight and the Rivers Act of nineteen ninety-six. Those both require two hundred feet of border on each side of a stream or brook. That stream flows into Millbrook, which runs through the Knott property down just below Row Road. And again, as someone who's walked those woods for most of my life, I'm a little surprised that the wetlands area was concerns were not addressed that I could find in the environmental study. That's one area. The second one, I had studied the top graphical maps at some length and discovered that our property at eleven Knott Road is almost exactly the same height as the base of the tower would be over about a quarter mile away. The pictures supplied by AT&amp;T maintained that the balloon could not be seen from there. Well, I can tell you, having stood there yesterday morning and looked at the tree line, the tree line's only sixty-five feet high. A quarter mile away, a tower, a proposed tower of one hundred and eighty feet would be immensely visible from our front yard at eleven Knott Road. Again, when the picture was supplied by AT&amp;T, it showed no balloon. I can tell you that is creative photography, we would call it in my business. So I just want to encourage those two areas to be looked at again as part of a quality of life issue, both for the wetlands preservation and for those of us who will be most impacted visually on Knott Road and the immediate area around it by a tower proposed to loom over the landscape. Thank you.
Let me address part of that. The AT&amp;T only photographed the balloon from the roads. They did not go on anybody's private property. So if anybody has images from their property, I'd like you to send them to the wetlands. Okay. I'm sorry, I got I got distracted. We need to let another person in the meeting. So yes, send me images that show where the balloon was. And if the balloon wasn't there, I think something like that, where something's a quarter mile away and you can, we can establish where it was. The planning board will use those images as, you know, evidence for sure.
I thank, thank you, Doug. I would add, our notification of the balloon test arrived at our home one week after the test was done. So we had no opportunity to participate in that. And quite frankly, the simple physics and of the of the site would make it clear that a sixty-five-foot tree line and a one hundred and eighty-foot tower a quarter mile away would be, as I said, immensely visible. Those are, and those are measurable distances.
Well, I know we have, we have a picture from the wine guards, and we have a picture from Tara Mason's house. And we can, we can document that even without the picture. I mean, I can go there and take a picture, you know, given that same information. So Bill, you wanted to comment? Then we'll go back to Kevin. You're muted.
Just a quick, quick comment. I was wondering, Doug, with your drone, if you could tie a flag on it and send it up one hundred and eighty-five feet from the the location where the tower would go. Just see if if Bill could see it.
Yeah, the, yes, the answer is yes, but I would have to have permission to be on the Metallica property with the drone. I wouldn't want to try to fly in and find the spot. Though I could, I could probably do that, too. But if we could, if we got permission for that, I would do that. Would not, would not with a flag. You'll have to see the drone, but I have a pretty big drone. So so Kevin?
Maybe after the answer, give give a little more of a statement. But I I guess I'm curious, you know, the applicant has asked for a continuance, and the explanation is that they are trying to respond to the planning commission, planning board with with respect to requests that you have put to them. Do you guys have a list that you can sort of read off indicating what what you've asked AT&amp;T to To supply as far as additional assessments go?
Yes, I think David, David addressed that a little bit, but one of the things is they have to respond to the conservation commission's questions. Another, and another thing was the, the data at 110 feet, which I think we have. And help me out, planning board. What were the other questions or actually, I guess you would know. Michael, what are the other questions you're working on?
I think Simon would probably have a better feel for that. Simon, do you want to add anything in that regard?
Sure. Right. One of the reasons why we had asked for this continuance and I was hoping that. You know, I don't want to confuse the issue because we do have responses to even some of the things that are being brought up today. Was Mr. Luttrell had provided a. I'm at my in-laws' house here. You're going to have to excuse the, the wind chimes if you hear him in the background. Mr. Luttrell had provided a report through his study and I know he's, you know, he's well respected up there and, and, and. On, on his expertise. And one of the items was the stream and, and, and the location of that stream bed. That's been flagged by some striped flags and then there's been some other flagging done up there. And as the board knows, and I'm, I'm, I don't know if the, if the public in attendance would be aware that the, the planning board is not. The final, you know, arbiter of, of the, whether the power would, would get approved. If the, if there's a need to go through the conservation commission and work with them through a. You know, the, a notice that would be filed, the notice of. Intent or determination of, if the Wetlands Act or any other. Authority where the board has, where the conservation commission has jurisdiction. Is, is in place, then we would go through that, we'd go through that process. So that's one of the items that we are evaluating. Mr. Luttrell's report that was brought out. And to determine, you know, what, where we are, whether the road could be relocated. There was some question about a. Potential runoff of, you know, retaining any of the, of the stormwater that would be out there. That's another part of the design that's being redone by the. By the A and E vendor, the, the engineer that's designing the project for us. So those were the, there, those were the issues on the plan. There's also some clarity needed about some distance to. Some property lines, I believe it was. So the, the A and E vendor is doing some revisions to the plan. We've also taken note of some of the comments from the butters regarding. The height question and from the board regarding the height question. So we're having an analysis done of that by the radio frequency engineers at C squared. So. Again, I think some of the issues that are coming up this evening. Would be addressed. At the, at the continuation of the hearing where we'd be in position. We'll have our, our radio frequency expert there. We'll have some, some conservation. Input. So we'd be able to give that, you know, full picture at the continued, at the continued date. And so, you know, I'm not trying to beg off on being responsive or being evasive or anything, but that's essentially what, you know, what we would, what we'd be offering at this point. And again, I don't know if Mike has anything else to add to that, but you know, that seems to be where we are at this point.
So has, has a site specifically delineation been, been requested?
Yes, that is one of the things. That is one of the items that's being worked on and was done originally some time ago. Some of the wetlands were looked at, you know, there, there's the evaluation of the stream. As to its. Consistency or, you know, whether it's perennial and those kind of things. So that, those are all things that are being looked at at this point. Again, along with the, along with the, the flow of storm water. And making sure that the proposed erosion controls are in place. So those items would all be addressed or are being addressed by the A and E folks. Again, we had requested that we get the report from Mr. Luttrell to review and that is being done as well.
Go ahead, finish up, Kevin, and then you can go next. Bob's next and then Amy. Finish up, Kevin.
Okay. Okay. So, so just, just so I'm clear. Is, is a formal. Wetlands delineation occurring or is it some type of informal process of just assessing where, where streams are seen? I guess are all the typical protocols being involved with, with respect to doing a formal wetland delineation?
Well, at this point. Well, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so Simon, who is responsible for the wetlands evaluation? Is it? Is it Bill Luttrell or is it you guys?
Well, we're hoping that it would be a combination. We do, Mr. Luttrell has pointed out some of the issues that he's seen. He found a, an upland area close to the, to the tower, as I'm recalling. And as well as pointing out the fact that there is that stream. In that area. So he's pointed that out. We have our wetland scientists looking at it and Mr. Luttrell, I believe, and. I don't want to speak in error. I don't have the report in front of me. As I said, I was. You know, kind of expecting this to be a continuation, but I believe Mr. Luttrell had stated that he believes that there would be a need for a. A filing with the, with the actual conservation commission. And at that point, you know, most of these issues would be hashed out and that's where we'd have to get a delineation. And again, Mr. Luttrell would have the ability to review that and. You know, either agree with it or bring up some, you know, some evidence that there might be some modifications needed and those kinds of things. And then we would have the conservation commission available to review it.
We'll make sure.
Let me just, just as in the. Go ahead.
So just on that subject, we will, we are going to do a continuation. We'll decide when that is. And we'll make sure that we get Bill Luttrell here for that. So we, so just to. To sum up, Kevin, we will, we are going to look into that carefully. We promise.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I mean, that, that is a major concern of mine because there are statements in the applicant's. Application, you know, that, that it would not create impacts to, to designated wetlands or buffer areas. And I just don't think that due diligence was done with respect to that. In, in a letter that I sent dated May 17th, I also indicated that there is an endangered species that has been identified. As having maternity roosting trees over in Row. You know, some, somewhat close to sort of the town center in Row, which is fairly close to this site. So I, I am requesting that, 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 that this site be, be assessed for, for that as well, given the proximity to. To an important. You know, ecological resource.
If I may on that one, we do get the, we do go through that NEPA process, which that is part of it. I believe, I don't know if you're thinking about a particular bat, I believe that may be out in that area. But the NEPA, the NEPA process does involve a, a species evaluation. Of all projects that we do, essentially, we get input from local, what are I believe are still called Indian tribes, local Native American. Interest that have jurisdiction, all the species and. And the flora and fauna. So that is all been submitted and you should have those reports available.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess I did send in a letter requesting. To get an update with, with respect to, to whether there's been any deeper or deeper filings. And so I think what I'm hearing now is there have been some filings. Are, are there? Are there public comment periods associated with those filings and are those filings still open? And can I get a copy of those? Can all of us get a copy of those filings so we can understand everything? That is active with respect to this proposed project?
So again, I don't have that material in front of me, but I know there have been filings. And we will make sure that we address that at the continuation. But again, that shouldn't, that shouldn't jeopardize any of the response or comment periods that may be available. Again, I'd have to look at that one a little bit. We have a number of projects ongoing simultaneously and. I'd have to look at this one specifically. I don't know if Mike has anything in front of him, but I know that again, as a matter of course, under all. I mean, this is a heavily regulated industry and that is one of the areas that we do have to work with within is the NEPA protocols.
So there is, there is a, there is a document on the planning board website that links to all of the documents involved with this, which AT&amp;T is updating. So. You know, it's a link that takes you to a Word doc or a, a Google Docs page. That does have all of these. Documents on it. So if you, if you go there and you don't see any of those, you can get in touch with me and I will make sure that they get put up there. But it's kind of a, since it's a link.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm. Yeah, I'm, I'm actively looking at it and, and, and I, well, every week or so, take, take a look at the site. The only new document I see on here, two new documents. One is the table of contents and one is the request for a continuance. I don't really see any other documents that, that are newer than the last time I looked. So I do.
I, I can just add that as and when we have information on potential impact on endangered species, we'll, we'll make it public to the group. And that is definitely on our checklist of things we have to do.
Okay. Yeah. No, I mean, the, the only thing that concerns me here a little bit is I, I sent in a letter that specifically asked whether or not there's been any deeper, deeper. Fileings and I never heard back or response. And during the first hearing, there was no mention to it and I get concerned with, with any applications like that, this public comment periods. And I, I did try to go on to, I forget if it was the NEPA or the MEPA site and see if there was anything active in Heath and, and did not. Did not turn up something, but I'm not an environmental scientist, so I, I'm, I'm not familiar with these, with these websites. So I, I just think wetlands in this area is a concern and the approach that's been taken so far has been simplistic. And not typical from the Northeast, a little bit more typical from the Midwest. But not from the Northeast. And so, you know, that's why I just want to make sure the ecological issues are addressed before. You know, the planning, the planning board approves this, this, this permit. I, I also, I also want to just, I, I think one final statement and then, you know, I'll turn it over to other people to, to have comments. But you know, at, at the last meeting, I mentioned a major concern with the aesthetics of this roadway coming off of Row Road. And just the topography. As this access road is climbing off a row road, it's only a 12 foot wide access road. And the applicant sort of seemed surprised that the tree, the tree clearing necessary to put it in this 12 foot wide roadway was going to be 50 to 70 feet wide. And that, that just concerns me, the aesthetic of that type of road coming off of Row Road in this area. And so one of the things I asked for was to get, you know, a visual rendering of what, what that would look like. And, and so I don't know if that is a request that's been made of the applicant.
Yeah, the answer, the answer is yes, we will have to have an accurate map of where the road goes. And that comes back to the conservation commission study. And also that's part of this continuation. So I don't think we can put them on the spot right this minute, but we certainly will have. A, a comment, we'll have enough time after the meeting. That's why I'm adding as much time to the shot clock as we add to the continuation. There will be time after we close this meeting for the planning board and everybody to study. All, all of these documents. And so go ahead, Bill.
Okay.
You want to finish up, Ken? Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Part of Kevin's question was what, what sorts of questions have the board asked of the applicant? One of them is that first, the applicant indicated that a big part of this tower is to provide first net coverage. For basically A to A, the only road that gets much of any traffic. Eight A runs through Heath for 3.2 miles. And at least in the application, it looked as though they were going to cover that. But. The maps show that very little of A to A, relatively little of A to A is being covered. So one of the questions is.
Sorry, Bob, start over. Somebody you got stepped on there.
Do I need to repeat any of that?
You do need to repeat that. Someone was not muted and stepped on you.
One of the questions is. How much of eight A is actually going to be covered by this tower since one, the, one of the driving reasons for the tower is first net coverage for motorists. Who, or, who are in trouble on eight A. And my sense is not very much, but we will get the specific data from the applicant.
If I could, if I could address that part, I actually. Went up to your town and drove from point to point and wrote Route 8A. Came to 6.8 miles within, within your town. I went and, you know, then turned around and Vermont and came back. And measured it twice. And that is one of the other analysis that is again, being done as part of this continuance to refine the parts of six A or eight A that will be covered. And at what. At what level, meaning that basically. You have, as we've explained previously, and I'm not an RF expert, but. Levels of coverage that are available based on the strength of the, of the signal. And we're trying to, you know, drill down into that a little bit so we can show what parts of eight A would be covered. And what parts would have, you know, a lesser coverage. One of the other areas that is being looked at is out in the area out towards Row, which was part of the objective for the, for the, for the facility. So we will have a more refined response and that's, at the next part of the hearing.
Okay, Amy Crane?
Yeah, so I heard earlier. Thank you. I heard earlier some discussion of, of lights on the tower. And so if this brought up a question in my mind that's related to the aesthetics or lack thereof of this tower. I've been in Heath for, for many decades and the light pollution has grown pretty remarkable over that time. And one of the aesthetics of a small town is when it's dark, it's dark, there aren't street, uh, streetlights. So my question to the planning board is, is there any analysis going to be conducted of the potential? In kind of layperson term, light pollution associated with this tower?
It's my understanding that it does not need to have a light on it at 180 feet or lower. But I'll ask David to chime in on that or Simon.
This is Dave, real quick. Yes, they provided an, actually, I'm looking at the. Material here. There's an FCC FAA 1A certification. That's just of the location. Is that correct? Yes. And then separately, there was a Tau Air search results, which is an FCC tool for determining whether you need to even notify the FAA. If you don't need to notify the FAA, you don't need lights. And so they've, they've submitted a, a document that, that indicates that. They could go to a more. Precise method of making this determination, but there are no airports within five miles of the, of the site. If anybody knows of one, let us know. And because of that, the tower could be as high as 199 feet without having any lights on it.
Okay. Bill, go ahead. Bill, go ahead.
I was just looking at the, the map that Dave produced with his big egg, blue egg on it. And I, earlier, some, I think it was maybe also Dave's that, or no, I think it was Bill Knott that said something about the frontage on Row Road being approximately 200 feet. And I don't have a, I've never seen a property map for this lot that proposed for the site. But from Dave's, Dave's map, it looks like there's frontage of that lot on Row Road and also on Knott Road. From what I can see. So the, the question that popped into mind, my mind is, what, what zone is this? And there are two zones possible. Zone, zoning district A is agriculture and residential district A, which requires 250 feet of frontage. And the other possibility, and I'm guessing that this is probably the district, because A only goes back off of, well, it's a zone that follows the roads and goes back a certain distance, and I think the distance is 200 feet. But anyway, beyond that is the district B, which is agriculture and forestry. If it's, the proposed tower is in District D, it requires 350 feet of frontage. So I think it would be important to know which district it's in, how much frontage it has on either Row Road or Knott Road, and whether, in either case, if it meets the 350 feet of frontage required on zoning.
This is David, real quick. I can call your attention to the applicant zoning drawings and drawing number C1, which shows the boundary of the agricultural residential against the agriculture and forestry zoning districts superimposed on the property. It also shows the 225-foot frontage on Row Road. I haven't looked up, not really yet, but 204 feet on Knott Road.
Both of them are below the 250 feet minimum.
Do you want to put that map up, David? I've, I've got, I've got the,
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
That's for residents.
If the tower is in District D, then it's requires 350 feet of frontage, the way I read our zoning.
If I, if I could on that one, with Simon, I forget the again. The frontage requirements are typically applicable if you're looking at property as a building lot for a residential structure or a commercial structure, a commercial building. Towers and these types of accessory structures typically aren't governed by the, by the frontage requirements on properties, but again, I'm not giving, you know, legal advice on that. If you need, you know, your, your attorney, your town attorney could give you that advice. I don't know if Mike had anything on that. Or, you know, even if Dave Maxx can speak, I know he's not an attorney, but from his, you know, from his experience on that. But, you know, my, my belief there is that frontage would apply if it were being, if it were being considered a, a building lot for a residence or potential commercial building.
The, the tower would require a building permit, I am assuming?
Yes.
And my understanding from the building inspector, building commissioner, is that for him to issue a building permit, he would need to document that the lot meets our zoning frontage requirement. I, I agree. I, I think an attorney should look at that and come, give us a good answer.
That's for a residence.
Well, it doesn't say that. I don't know anywhere in the zoning bylaw that it says frontage only, only applies to residences.
I think, so let's, we'll put that down as a question, and we will ask our attorney. That's not hard. We'll find that out.
Yeah, if I may, this is Ed Perry, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Hi, yeah, so I am not, I, I'm driving, so I can't look at the, at the plans, but you know, as David Maxson noted, the zoning districts are highlighted on the plans, and we will, you know, prepare responses for all of these questions, like with the length of Route 8A, and we'll get answers with respect to the frontage, et cetera, and our opinion regarding those, but you know, we're, we're not in a position to answer those this evening, but, you know, we have a, a number of items that, as the board knows and members of the public are aware, that we're working on. The most significant is the wetlands issues, because that's likely to change the road, you know, possibly significantly. So, you know, we could be looking at a shifting of the road or the access drive, you know, where it enters the property and, you know, where it ends up. And that was the, you know, the main reason for the request for the continuance. I know that, you know, we're listening, we're, you know, taking down notes, and we'll have answers to all of these, but we're not going to be in a position this evening to, you know, address with that sort of specificity. But we will, and you will get answers on all of the questions that are being asked, and, you know, we'll revise our plans as necessary so that we comply.
All right, thanks, Ed. All right, so I have, I've, I've made a list of all these questions. We're gonna, we've asked some of them. I will, I will send a recap to Ed and the board. And we will, I have not yet published all of your letters. I will do that. I want to put them all in one big document, so it's kind of easier to download. Does anybody else, any of Butters have any other comments about things that haven't been brought up yet?
Yeah, hi, this is Kevin. Just, just, just one final thing. I think there were two of us who brought up at the last meeting. There, there, there is a passage in, in the zoning that says for security reasons, all personal wireless service facilities shall be at least 1,500 feet from the property line of any school. And, and I guess the, the question came up from, from two of us. But it is, what is this security concern, and, and how does this school differ from another? So I, I think it's a question to the planning commission and not to the applicant.
This is David.
Yeah, the only thing I, the only thing I would say is, is you have, we put a note on our plans indicating that we're outside of the 1,500 foot, so that we comply with the bylaw, but the purpose and intent, I guess that would lead to the planning folks.
Yeah, this is David. I've, I've seen and been involved in lots of bylaw processes in, in Massachusetts towns and including writing new bylaws and editing old ones. And sometimes these radiuses that come up don't really have a clearly defined purpose. People are, are basically log-rolling to get their language and their terminology into the final version that's put before town meeting. And so in a case like this, we can only assume what the reasoning was for it. But at this point, it is a, a planning dimensional criterion that was adopted by the town, and as the applicant, as Mr. Perry just said, they've made an effort to comply with that requirement and the others, and really isn't any reason to go any further with it. And while I have your attention, I, I have a quick response to the question about the 100-foot height, which was in Section 6.10, which is relating to fixed wireless facilities. And that's what internet service providers offer fixed service to a fixed receiver at a residence or a business. And that does not apply to this. This is a personal wireless facility, which is covered under Section 6.3. So the 110-foot height still remains the one that's applicable. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for that.
All right, so one more chance for anybody, any questions, any other concerns that we have not brought up yet?
I have a quick question, Doug.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
This has to do with the physical location of the tower of whoever, whoever wants to weigh in on it. It seems to me on the maps that the greatest increase in coverage over existing ATT coverage is really located in North Heath, you know, along that section of 8A. Now, is there any way that that same coverage can be achieved by a tower that's north of that area, i.e. in Vermont?
I think that's a Simon question. Or David.
Well, I think we probably, I think we probably need, I mean, if there, if there's an area that, you know, as David identified in his map, you know, with a, with an oval, we're looking at, you know, responding to, to those areas. So Doug, if, you know, not being able to see anything, if you, if you could ask the person making the inquiry to kind of identify for you on the map and let us know where that might be, you know, we could take a look to see if it, you know, solves it from an RF perspective, but you know, we just, we have to have a sense of where it's located, because terrain, I think David will, you know, agree, terrain is going to make a difference. And I'm just not in a position to, to guess where we're looking. If, if we can identify it, we can look at it and determine if it makes sense.
So I guess that's, that's my question with the board. Are we entertaining other, other legislation? What, 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 what do you guys think?
Whoever that was, I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Oh, that was, that was, that was, that was, that's very, very,
Doug, you're totally garbled.
I'm, I'm garbled. That's my terrible internet.
You're, you're not coming through at all, Doug. There's something wrong with your mic.
No, there's something wrong on my, my internet.
It's, it's Chinese.
He was asking Bob to take over.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Last chance for anyone to make any comments, questions. So the planning board will meet, planning board will meet and set a, a date for the next meeting. And as Doug pointed out, from that time, we will extend the so-called shot clock, the ability to have time to prepare responses to the applicant.
And Bob, Bob, we're picking, we're picking a continued, Bob, we're picking a continued date this evening, correct? So that, for notice requirement purposes?
Okay.
Yeah, if I could, if I could, this is Ed Perry. If, we need to set a date and time certain at the, at this meeting so that, you know, interested parties who are listening in will know when that's going to be, and we don't have to go through a notice requirement again.
Yeah. How long are you asking for?
Well, I'd like to get something, if I could, respectfully, I'd like to get something toward the end of June. We're expecting our, you know, wetlands information back in, in about another week and a half, so we're anticipating like the, around the 11th. So if we could get something towards the end of June, I think we would have everything ready to go, and it would give me an opportunity to be responsive to all of these, you know, questions and issues, and we will upload all of that so that, you know, the board members, the public can see, you know, how we're responding and not, you know, delivering it the night of the hearing. So the later in June was the better, from our perspective.
June 21st or later. That's a Monday. It seems to work for most people.
Is it possible to go the week after, the 28th, would that be the 28th? Does that work for the board?
So Doug is signaling it works. So we will set the next meeting for June 28th, again at 7:00.
If, if I could, Simon, again, will this be a, will this continue to be on Zoom, do you think? Or are you going to be starting in-person meetings, or is there no way to know that at this point? Just so we'll know what to prepare for the hearing.
At this point, we haven't opened up the town, so there's no way to know. All of our buildings are still closed.
The, the report from the State House is that June 15th, the governor will turn off the state of emergency, which may remove all of these special rules that we have in place unless the legislature can get its act together and maintain them.
I, I still think that our Board of Selectmen has to make the decision. At this point, obviously, changes, as soon as it changes, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks, Bob. I thought at a previous meeting, we had said, maybe we're not clear, that the clock, the 90-day clock for approval or disapproval doesn't start until the public hearing closes. Is that true?
Bill, that's not the issue. It's something called the shot clock. So that's a different, we have two different deadlines, or, and one of them, if you remember, Calvin referred to, we have until August. He was thinking about the shot clock. You have 100,
It's 150 days from the date the application was filed for the board to meet the FCC expectation.
150 days starts.
Plus, right, plus whatever extensions the applicant provides.
Shot clock extended.
Okay.
There's two clocks.
And yes, the 90-day clock is after the close of the hearing.
Right.
But it could run into the FCC shot clock.
Right, that's our concern.
And we will, and we will provide an extension to the shot clock so that there's no, we, we understand that this delay was at request for continuance. This was at our, our request, and we will send a shot clock, the FCC shot clock accordingly.
Yes, in writing, right?
It's always in writing. In writing.
Any other business, planning board or anybody? So I make a motion at the meeting, be adjourned? Or continued, sorry? Bill seconds?
I second.
Bob seconds? Doug seconds?
Joe seconds.
Joe seconds. So we're closing the meeting at, give me a prime time.
8:20.
Or 8?
8:25.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.